Bless us through this across the season. Help us to understand the birth of Jesus Christ. And it's in his name we ask, come here. Uh, at this time we had a pledge allegiance. This is. Of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. You've had your. Package. Let's look at the agenda first. Any additions or corrections to the agenda? Anything added or be taken off? This is the first agenda. If not, do I have a motion to approve the agenda? Counselor Trippett made the motion to. Woman Dobbins made the second. They all have to keep me straight. Uh, all the favors say I. All opposed? The agenda is approved. Have the minutes of your regular November fifteenth? Any package? There any correction or addition to them?
There's a slight change that needs to be made on the first page. Where it says approval of agenda. It says Mayor Wright asked for the approval of the gen- agenda, and then it says Mayor J.C. Trippett, they should say Mayor Protein. That's the only difference I saw there. With that correction, I'm making a motion that we accept the minutes.
Was this change made in the minutes of? And we've got a motion by Councilman Trippett and a second, uh, Councilman. Dave. All the favors say I. All opposed? I'll have it. The motion's good. The minutes are approved. And I'm assuming that everyone has read the closed session minutes.
Thank you, motion will be closed session meeting minutes.
Councilman McGowan made the motion that we approved the closed session minutes. Councilwoman Dobbins made the second. All my favors say I. All opposed? I'll say it. Motion approved. Let me get back to my page here. At this time, we have our first open forum. Anyone wish to speak to the council at this time, come forward. State your name, address, and hold your comments to three minutes, please.
Name's Fay Wright, seven twenty-five Power Ten Road. It might be a little late, but has anybody thought about putting a stoplight down there at Tony? Store all day traffic for a year is going to be coming off of seventy through Wilson's Mills. Can somebody contact DOT and see if we can get a stoplight down there?
That intersection has actually been part of the discussions with the TAC. In Wilson, it's a transportation committee. And they are looking at that intersection and all of that area on Wilson's Mills Road with the increased traffic. So it's on their radar. And I'm not sure what they're planning to do there, but they are planning to do something.
I hope they do something because don't them poor people that coming out of Power Ten Road will never get on the road.
Thank you. Anyone else? If close our first. Oh, one. That's six thirty-five. And go into our. Regular business. At this time, we, uh. I must have day short. To present the, uh. Two thousand twenty, twenty-one audit.
Good evening. My name is Jay Sharp. I'm the audit partner in charge of the town's twenty-one audit. Appreciate you having me out tonight. So I have a short presentation. I believe you have copies in front of you if you want to follow along. First of all, I'm going to talk about the audit proceedings. Then I'll talk about the results of the twenty-one audit. And then finally, I'll give some financial analysis of the town's financial situation at the end of twenty-one. So we'll go ahead and get started. Status, fieldwork has been completed. The financial statements have been prepared. The audit was submitted to the local government commission for their review, and they have approved it. So the audit has been issued and completed for twenty-one. A little bit of roles and objectives, a little bit of background on what we do. We don't just come in and start crunching numbers. There's some procedures we do ahead of time, some planning procedures. Most of those revolve around internal controls with the town's financials. We gain our understanding or get an update of any changes in internal controls for the year. And then sometimes we do test controls. And so for two thousand twenty-one, we tested controls over cash disbursements, over payroll, and over credit cards. Some from our understanding of internal controls in place and from the results of our testing controls. We perform what we call a risk assessment. It's a risk-based audit approach. So we're going to assess risks to each of the major financial reporting areas for the town. We're going to concentrate our audit procedures on the higher risk areas. But we are going to look at all the significant financial reporting areas for the town. And we do this to gain sufficient audit evidence to render an opinion on the financial statements. That's why you hire us is to give an opinion. And we're going to talk about that opinion here in a second. But the opinion itself concentrates on whether the financial statements are free from material misstatement. So the results of the two thousand twenty-one audit. Happy to report the scope and the timing of the audit were on track. If you remember, for two thousand twenty, the LGC did extend the deadlines to January thirty-first. They did not do that for two thousand twenty-one. It was back to the regular deadlines. But we did submit the audit on time. No issues there. I'm happy to report the town received an unmodified opinion on the financial statements for two thousand twenty-one. That is the best possible opinion you can receive. It should be is the opinion the town should strive for a year and a year out. Basically means a clean opinion on the financial statements for two thousand twenty-one. I'm happy to report during our proceedings, there were no material weaknesses or no significant deficiencies noted during the audit process. The prior year audit finding was corrected. There were no findings for two thousand twenty-one. That's the first time the town's not had any findings for the last couple of years. So no findings for two thousand twenty-one. As a result of our audit procedures, we did have several minor audit adjustments to some routine adjustments. Nothing unusual with those for two thousand twenty-one. In addition to our audit, we're required to issue a separate, what we call a communications letter. There's four major talking points with that. First of all, if there's any accounting policy changes, major accounting policy changes that affect your financial statements, we're required to communicate that to you. Or there was one implemented for two thousand twenty-one, had to do with the fiduciary funds. In previous audits, those were the, you had a trust fund. Those were reported separately. Because of changes in accounting standards, those are now combined with the government funds. So they're not shown separately on the financial statements anymore. One of the areas we look at in close detail are estimates. The two major estimates the town has with this financials are depreciation and allowance for doubtful accounts. All estimates related to those two issues appeared reasonable, no issues there. I'm happy to report we had no disagreements with management and no difficulties encountered whatsoever with the towns during the audit. We had complete cooperation from everybody during the audit process. So I'm going to end up the presentation going over the numbers. Some of this is comparative analysis. First of all, I'm going to talk about the general fund. So if you're following along, the first graph here is revenues and expenses for the general fund. And this shows it for the last four years. First thing you'll notice is revenues have gone up over the last four years. Back in two thousand eighteen, you were just above one point three million dollars in revenues. For two thousand twenty-one, you were just above one point five million dollars in revenues. Your expenses have also gone up. You were just around one point three million dollars back in two thousand eighteen. You were just above one point four million dollars in two thousand twenty-one. For the last four years, the town's general fund has shown a profit. So your revenues have outpaced your expenses each of the last four years. The next graph I want to look at is your fund balance relating to the general fund. This is basically your assets less your liabilities. Or the total profits of the town from the day one of its operations through a certain time period. So this graph starts back at June thirtieth, two thousand seventeen, and proceeds through June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-one. Back in two thousand seventeen, you were just below one point one million dollars in fund balance in your general fund. At the end of two thousand twenty-one, you're just below one point six million dollars in fund balance. So your fund balance has grown about a half a million dollars over the last five years, showing that the town is financially healthy. The next graph is the breakdown of your fund balance. So now all fund balance is available for use. Some of it's restricted. You see the pieces of the pie there in red and blue. Those are restricted fund balance. You can always use those for specific reasons, or some of it's restricted by general statute that relates to any monies that are due to town. General statutes say you can't spend money you have not received yet. So once you do receive that money, you're able to spend that. But the biggest piece of the pie is your unassigned fund balance. That's where it's available to spend by the town, and that was just below one point three million dollars at the end of two thousand twenty-one. Now, what we like to do here is compare your unassigned fund balance to your expenditures in the previous year. The LGC generally likes to like to see that to be about the eight percent range. The town is a ninety-six percent. So you have outstanding fund balance numbers. It shows the town is financially healthy. And basically, you have a year's worth of fund balance in place. The next couple of graphs are going to go through some comparative analysis and some ratio analysis. First of all, we're going to look at cash reserves. What we're doing here is comparing your unrestricted cash balances to your expenditures. How long can you continue operating as a town if you receive no more cash inflows? And you have an outstanding number here. We generally recommend three to six months. For two thousand twenty-one, you have three hundred forty-two days in cash reserve, so almost a year, almost double what we recommend for towns to have. And that kind of goes back to where I was just saying, where you almost have a hundred percent of fund balance in place compared to your annual expenditures. Shows that the town is financially healthy at the end of two thousand twenty-one. The next couple of graphs are going to look at your property taxes. This show is how the property taxes have done over the last four years. Back in two thousand eighteen, you received six hundred eighty-three thousand dollars in property taxes. For two thousand twenty-one is eight hundred forty-seven thousand dollars. So your property tax revenue has gone up over the last four years. However, per your next graph, your property tax rate has remained flat. There's been no increase in property tax rates over the last four years. So the revenues have gone up, but the rates have remained the same. And finally, I'm going to talk about with the general fund, how the town spent its money over the last couple of years. For two thousand twenty-one, the largest piece of the pie, what you spend most of your funds, forty-five percent, was public safety. That was followed by twenty percent going toward general administration. And the third largest nineteen percent going towards streets. So those are your three biggest expenditures for the town: public safety, general administrative, and streets for two thousand twenty-one. Now, it was slightly different in two thousand twenty. Public safety remained your top expenditure line item, about forty-four percent, followed by your general administrative at twenty-two percent. Or however, two thousand twenty, it was planning board that was fourteen percent. So a little bit shift between streets and planning board for the two years, but public safety and general administration remaining the top two expense line items for the town. Now, I'm going to conclude talking about the water and sewer fund. Two thousand twenty-one was the second full year of operations. And so, you know, you're looking at the graph back in two thousand eighteen and nineteen, you had minimal revenues and expenses. And they jumped up last year and for two thousand twenty-one, for two thousand twenty-one, you had total revenues of about a hundred fifty-six thousand dollars. Compared to total expenses of about a hundred seventy-five thousand dollars. Now, part of that expense is depreciation. That's obviously a non-cash expenditure. So the last couple of years, your expenses have been more in your revenues for your water and sewer fund. However, a lot of your expenses relate to depreciation. So there's nothing to be concerned about there. And finally, we're going to talk about your cash reserves, your water and sewer fund. Now, when we do this, we do look at your cash balances and we compare it to your expenses. However, we did not include depreciation in that calculation because depreciation is non-cash. At two thousand, and then two thousand twenty-one, you had a hundred sixty days worth of cash reserves in place for your water and sewer fund. So once again, that fund shows very healthy cash balance at the end of the year. So basically, overall, the financial health and the financial picture of the town is really great at June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-one. With that, I'll be glad to take any questions you have on the audit procedures, the results of the audit, or the numbers themselves.
I have two questions.
Yes.
Hold on a second. How close do I have to get? Do I have to eat the mic? Okay. I have two questions. So you mentioned early in your presentation, high risk. Did you find anything in the Wilson's Mills program that's high risk?
No, I said, we did test controls over certain areas. And all the, all those issues, they were working, the controls were functioning as they should, and so there was no findings this year.
Okay, the last question, under your findings, prior, you mentioned here, prior year findings corrected. What, what did you need, what needed correcting from the previous year?
Yeah, I believe the prior audit adjustments were not made from the two thousand nineteen audit, so the two thousand twenty numbers didn't roll forward. Now, if you do remember, last year, the two thousand nineteen audit was completed late. The auditor did not do what he was supposed to be doing and got the audit done late. And so we, we were trying to get the two thousand twenty audit done quickly because of the upcoming deadline. And so that did not allow time for the prior audit adjustments to be entered into the system.
Thank you.
He has a question, Joe. I'm sure. If not, all my favor to budget. Review. Have a motion.
I should accept the audit.
A second.
Got from Trip made motion to accept all overview, uh. Counselman McGowan made a second. Any other questions? If not, all my favors say I. All opposed? I'll have it. Motion's good. The, uh. The budget, overviews, except.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you for having me up.
Uh. Says it's time for me to give an events report. I had a movie at the park Friday night. Now, I can't even think of what the name of it was now, but anyway. Who? Great. He had a great. Uh, it was pretty good. I fancy it the time before. It'd been good, I imagine, but. With three boys looking at television, you got to watch it once in a while. You have anything you want, Dave?
Our Christmas tree parade on the third of December went really well. We gave out, I think it was about seventy gift bags. That Johns County Business Bureau donated, and then we added a few things into them. So we had a really good turnout. So we're happy with that.
Thank you. Sewer report, Councilman Trippett.
Do we have any updates on their discussion with the county?
Not heard anything back. I can contact them to see if they've got any comments. We did have it for over a year on our side, so I was giving them a little bit of time before I started pressuring them about it, but, but I'll, I'll touch base with them.
If anything, it's from a sewer report. Councilman Dobbins, Councilwoman Dobbins. Planning and zoning report.
Planning and zoning. I don't have any report. But the staff report is attached for your review. Any questions?
Any questions, I missed it. Police report.
I'm just meant to fill. Are you able to keep up with what they're submitting in? Because if you look around the county in Smithfield, trying to come all the way up past the airport. It's, it's a prime real estate. Bugs are selling left and right. We're going to have to, she can't do it by herself, so. We're going to have to remember this whenever they start putting these subdivisions and stuff in to get help.
Anything else on the plan?
Are we talking about an assistant for Wendy? Okay, I just want that plain understood. Okay.
If nothing else, we'll move on. Uh, police report, Councilman McGowan.
Chief Williams, would you please step forward and submit your report?
You got the report in front of you. If you have any questions, be happy to ask.
I don't have any questions, Steve. I just want to be one of them to say, well, well done on the, uh. Well done on the apprehensions for the vehicle break-ins. Well done for Officer Joyner in that traffic stop with the. Uh, the, the rifle, et cetera, and the traffic stop for the, the, uh. The drugs and the cash. Well done. I, I, and I can't help but think it's, you guys are really stepping up. I love to see it. Look, you got a hundred car stops. That's what, that's what it leads to. Thank you very much for all of your work. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Things like, uh, Jonah. Not dog, but, uh.
Sir.
Officer Jordan been busy.
Yeah, well, all the guys have been busy. Everybody's stepped up. It's holiday season. You know, we don't have quotas or anything. We just want people to go out there and work and, you know, do what they're supposed to do. And they all do that, or not.
Has every, have all the members of the council and the mayor, have you read the insert that Chief Williams put in here regarding rifles?
I was, that's what I was getting ready to refer to.
Yeah, this is, this is something that the chief and I talked about, and he asked if he could put this in here, and I, I said, yeah, let's, let's do it. Because this is something that's got, this is a discussion that's got to come to the forefront. And if you recall, I, I think I brought this up one time several months ago, Chief, am I correct?
That's correct.
Yeah, and, and now look what's happening. It's, it's, it's coming to the forefront. Chief Williams, I'm not stealing any of your thunder, but Chief Williams did a, uh. Did a survey of the municipalities in Johnston County. Other than Micro, which has one officer, we are the only municipality. That does not have long guns, and I'm not talking about shotguns. I'm talking about. Long guns to prevent our officers, to help them from being outgunned. And I'm sure every one of these officers here tonight, and every one of those officers that are, that are at home and couldn't make it in tonight. After the chase that Officer Joyner was involved in, where they recovered. All of the stolen goods plus money plus drugs plus an AR fifteen with, what was it, a hundred round drum magazine?
It was fully loaded. I don't know how many.
I'm sorry, what?
It was fully loaded. I'm not sure exactly the amount.
Typically, the drum magazine is a hundred, a hundred and twenty rounds, something like that. Yeah, I, I don't care if our officers are out there armed with an M sixty machine gun. They're going to be outgunned with this thing right here. And I, I for one, don't envy them having to, let alone in the broad daylight like this was. But at nighttime, stopping anybody wondering what's in that vehicle now. And this is something that I think we really have to step on right now and not say, yeah, we'll get to it at some point in time. I, I do not want any of our officers to be outgunned in any way, shape, or form.
Well, I would get ready to address what this is. I agree with you, David, that we need to do it. Do we have, have we come up with a cost estimate of how much it would cost us to, uh. Have every officer to have a, have a long gun. Have we come up with a cost estimate yet? Because I'm like you, I think we need to get it done, but we need a cost estimate of what it's going to cost us.
Chief, chief has looked into that, so he's got a response, chief.
We're still waiting on some of the estimates to come back, but we did look at the Smith and Wesson M and P fifteen. Tactical rifle, and its cost was about seven eighty-five seventy-three cents per rifle.
Could you say that again, chief?
Seven hundred eighty-five dollars.
How many rifles do we need?
We ate eight full-time, and we would need at least two for, um, for spares for part-time guys if they wanted to use it.
So that would be a total of?
A minimum of ten.
Ten.
But, you know, taking into account that we're still growing, so as we get more full-time officers, we need to equip them also.
So in other words, we probably need to look at fifteen.
Fifteen would be perfect, but a minimum of ten, I would think.
You said seven eighty-nine?
Yeah, but that's pretty bare bones.
Well, no. We don't, I don't, personally, I don't want a bare bone. I want the best we can get. That's what we're here for. Well, so you're looking at, the way my numbers come up, you're looking at a little like twelve to thirteen thousand dollars. Is that correct?
That'll be correct.
All right, I don't see why. We're waiting on this. I think we need to make that happen as quick as we can. I mean, do we need a motion? Or do we need to just tell you we, we need it?
You would need to vote on that since it's above my threshold. So if that's, if you want to vote on the number that you would like for him to go ahead and look into order.
I'll make a motion that we purchase fifteen. Long guns. Which is going to be a cost of approximately.
If I could add one more thing to that, again, we've grown since the last time we discussed this. We have one more full-time position that we allocated this summer, and we're short one taser now. Every time we grow, we get a person, the spirit that we has goes to the newest person. So now we're short one taser, and we don't have a spare for the part timers that might want to use it. So it's a safety issue, you know, as far as, you know, what the guys are equipped with.
So we need one more taste.
Actually, we need two.
Two, okay. I make a motion that we. Put in an order for fifteen long guns and two tasers. I don't know what the tasers cost, but by his estimate, we're looking at twelve to thirteen thousand dollars for the guns.
That's correct.
Well, and I don't, how much is a taste?
Two tasers is about twenty-eight hundred dollars.
All right. So that'll be fifteen, let's say fifteen thousand. We, we authorize up to fifteen thousand dollars. So that's my.
Twenty-eight hundred for two. Total for two.
Uh, that's close to fifteen thousand. So I make a motion that we as soon as we can order fifteen guns, two tasers at an approximate cost of fifteen thousand dollars. A thousand dollars or two above or below that cost, I think should be able to be handled within Leanna's parameters. I make that motion.
With, with that, you've got to add an ammunition and storage fee or a storage for a gun cabinet. So do we have space at town hall to store the spares with?
Yes, we just have to get a gun locker or something.
Mm-hmm.
That holds two to three guns and mounted in under control area.
Okay. What kind of ammunition are you looking like? Um, per officer, cause that's another cost that's going to need to be added in also. I know right now um, five, five, six for five hundred to a thousand rounds is kind of almost impossible to get, but law enforcement is top priority.
Yes.
Yeah. Right now, five, five, six ammo, they're lawmen on state contract where it's about three to three hundred fifty dollars per five hundred rounds. Four months, eight months to get it in. All of course, they are running a lot of five, five, six.
I'm, I'm going to go ahead and second the motion so we can continue the discussion, correct? Much like we did years, a few years ago, with respect to the, the cruiser situation. As you know, previous administrations, we were behind the eight ball. They kept every year. I saw it, so I'm not making it up. They would, they would toss it off and go, we'll get that next year. We'll get it next year. Um, when all along, we did have the money for it. So we have corrected that. And we have, we have the chief's, um, uh, I don't know what you want to call it, but it's the study that he can, he can put one of the cruisers into this study and decide if we need to replace it or not. And we've all agreed that that's something that needs to be done. And what I'm getting at is the fact that we are staying now with the cruisers one step ahead where we should be. So we're not falling behind the eight ball like we were. And with this move tonight, with the long guns, the tasers, the ammunition, the locker, et cetera, I see us doing the same thing. So all I'm saying is I'm applauding the effort of this council to do that, to make sure that every one of these officers, when they go out in that cruiser at night and they get in it, that they've got what it takes. They've got what it takes up here or else we wouldn't have hired them. They've got everything that it takes. Now we're providing them with the, the the hardware to do their job and stay safe. So thank you for voting for this.
I would just like to, just on what you said about the ammo. My, my, my statement to that would be if I'm gonna buy fifteen guns, I'm gonna expect us to be able to provide the ammo to it. I mean, uh, whatever that costs us, if we got fifteen guns, we need the ammo for it. I mean, there's no, there's no ifs, ands or buts about it. So we do, that shouldn't be part of the, the cost of the guns. That won't, that'll be just, that's just normal operating expenses.
Right. That's why I'm saying to go ahead and get started. We need to go ahead and add that price into what we've got here.
But that, won't that, won't that be something that we need to adjust to the police budget for the cost of the ammo?
Next year, yes.
Yeah.
But to get it started now, we need to go ahead and add it in.
Okay.
What we got.
Okay, that's fine.
And the idea of, uh, the chief was talking about bells and whistles that we don't need. What he's referring to is, you know, rails for, for, for lasers and, and lights and all kinds of all kinds of goodies. Right now, maybe we can add that later on, but right now we just need the guns. We need the weapons out there. I'd like to see that stuff added down the line, but that's going to be a function of the training department, the armor and the chief, what they do need, what they don't need. We need to throw a figure at this thing that's going to go, it's going to solve the weapon problem. It's going to solve the, the storage, the training and the ammunition. You had a question.
You said that, you said that we, uh, we need, how many rounds per gun? Three hundred and what?
If.
Some of the, the cost of for five hundred rounds.
Five hundred rounds is going to be about three hundred dollars. But we can third each gun issue out thirty rounds, one or two, sixty, ninety rounds, ninety rounds. We carry another fifty rounds to qualify. Four thousand rounds.
And five hundred costs us three hundred and what?
Around three hundred dollars, give or take a couple.
And we, you're saying four thousand?
I was saying, get it going good, put a train in the issue mount, looking about four thousand rounds.
And so eight. Round of dollars. Dollars. Oh, yeah. Can't the, the, the total of eighteen thousand dollars, including the guns, the ammo and the tasers. Okay, I'll amend, I'll amend my two tasers. Two tasers. Yeah, I know. But I'll amend my motion to say up to eighteen thousand dollars for fifteen guns. The proper amount of ammunition for those fifteen guns and two tasers.
And storage, storage locker.
Yeah.
And I'll second that.
Councilman Trippit made the motion to purchase the eighteen guns, two tasers and ammunition for the guns. Councilman McDowell. If further discussion.
Are our officers now, do they qualify long gun?
Not now, because we don't have them.
Okay. So they just go to pistol?
Yeah, handgun and shotgun qualification.
Okay. And, and my other question would be, um, I'm, I'm trying to understand what we're I, I don't, I don't want to have to come back and piecemeal. Does, does that include, was that, I mean, would that include, you know, straps for the, for the weapons, um, mounts for the weapons? I mean, you know, there's more than just buying a gun. I mean, are you going to mount it into cars? It gonna be, I mean, the, if you do, then you're gonna have to have mounts for the car. I mean, there's, there, I don't want to have to come back and revisit this again on another night since we're discussing it tonight.
Right.
Now, if we need to wait, if we need to wait until you can compile all those numbers, then, then I'm okay with that. But I, I won't, I just, you know, if you, if you need straps, if you need mounts in vehicles in the trunk or in the, in the, the passenger area, wherever you need them. So I guess, I guess I'm asking you, do you need more time to compile those to be comfortable with, with a number?
We can get you some additional figures if you want. Just all depends on how much, you know, where the council wants to go as far as I call them bells and whistles, you know, they're not, um, they're not a luxury. But, you know, uh, some of the bare bone stuff we, uh, would necessarily need right now. But as far as the car, the mountain in the car.
I just want to make sure that they're accessible to, to, to these guys once they need them. My, my, mine's accessible to me once I need it. And I don't want to have to fumble around and hope I can get to it. And I don't want them to either.
You know, I'm not, I'm not, certainly not an expert on this, but if I were Officer Joyner, I'm not fast enough to go back to that trunk and get that weapon out. I don't care how fast he is. He ain't fast enough. Uh, I would personally like to see them see included in this cost, the mounts for in the vehicle where it can be taken right out. No messing around. And while we're on the topic of that, perhaps, how many shotguns do we own?
Four, yeah.
Can we get rid of them and, and help offset some of this cost? Cause I don't think we're going to be needing shotguns for anything, are we?
Well, some officers prefer shotguns. I mean, it just depends on the officer. I like to give them the choice.
How many, how many officers would prefer a shotgun when they're faced with an AR?
I'm not saying over the AR. Um, but you know, shotgun has its, has its purpose and use too.
We, we can keep the shotguns, perhaps we'll keep them in the truck. I want the ARs in the car, but that's up to you guys, not me.
I do want to add that, um, in, in joiner situation, the AR fifteen wouldn't necessarily lessen the threat, you know, um, unless they got out of the car with the AR fifteen, which typically on a traffic stop, you're not going to do. But, you know, to always have that option, just, you know, you never know what's going to happen. You want the officer to have as much firepower, no matter what it is, whether it's a shotgun or AR or whatever. You want to have, let him have that ability to go back and have something to use. So, um, and that's what we want to do from an officer's safety standpoint, get them as much tools if, as they can to, you know, to utilize.
I'll bet you everyone, when they do a car stop, we're watching for an AR now.
I hope so.
I'm, I'm glad we did it. Do you think, in view of the, the brackets, et cetera, do you think we should just put a cap on this thing so we don't have to come back at it again? And if there's whatever extra, we can apply that towards ammunition, just put a I, I don't like to round figures up, but just say twenty thousand dollars. That will cover everything. Rather than come back and do this all again.
I don't have a problem with that.
Would, would that suffice, chief?
I think that would.
All right. So I'll re- amend my motion to say that we, we will spend a maximum of twenty thousand dollars.
I'll re-second that.
On, on fifteen guns, racks to hold them in the car, two tasers and ammunition. And the storage cabinet, yeah. We got second on that.
Yep.
Okay.
Councilman Trippit, uh, made a motion to hold limits at twenty thousand.
Twenty thousand.
Orders to lock them in the cars and I don't know what it. Who made the second?
I did.
Councilman McGowan made the second. Any further discussion? I've got one comment. When these guns are signed out, we need to make sure of the background check on these people that are getting them mentally, particularly. Make sure some dummy don't get a gun they don't need. You nine eleven, can't you?
Um, we're gonna, I don't think that would be a problem.
I mean, from childhood to.
That's not gonna be a problem, but yeah, we can handle that.
Uh.
We could handle that. I, I don't see that being a problem, but we can handle that.
Of course. Those guns are dangerous. Not just to you and me, but other people too. All right.
Sorry.
All opposed? I was having motions carried. You have anything else?
Chief has, uh, something else you'd like to bring up at this point in time?
Yes, um, Officer Barton, can you come up for a second? Real quickly, we like to, um, we started this last year, we like to give an award to officers, um, that go above and beyond. Officer Barton like to honor him with a service award twenty twenty-one, we're going above and beyond. The call of duty and all the officers do what they're supposed to do and they, um, they serve the community very well. Barton in particular, um, Officer Barton, he's, um, we've asked him, tasked him with some additional responsibilities and some assignments. And, um, little things like he didn't get his vehicle on time and he had to sit and wait. Uh, he waited patiently, didn't complain, and we just want to reward him with a two, twenty, twenty-one service award. Officer Dean Joiner, can you step forward? I'm into the last couple of months, um, Officer Barton was given also joiner run for his money. Um, Officer Joiner is the recipient of twenty twenty officer of the year. Uh, but he's a two-time champ now, so I want to commend him for his hard work and dedication. Um, he does, again, everybody does well, but seems like whatever it is, it's going to happen on his shift and he handles it very well. And he's the one that was involved in the latest incident, um, that everybody's heard of. And I can't reiterate how dangerous, uh, that was. And he handled it perfectly. And he got kudos from the sheriff's department and other departments on his radio traffic on how he, um, the chase went across Johnston County and his radio communications was, was superb. And they commended him on it and I passed it along to him. Congratulations. A different award this year. I want to stay along this line. This is the top cop for Wilson Smith. Um, Officer Matt Smith, can you stand up right quick? This is our newest part-time officer. Just wanted to introduce him to the council. He hasn't had a chance to meet you guys yet. He's a mechanic by trade and he's coming to law enforcement, a little late in life, but, uh, something he's always wanted to do. So we welcome him. Thank you, Matt.
Welcome.
And thank you, council. We appreciate it.
Thank you. Yes, I am. Day. Public Works report, Councilman Gurnick.
Everybody has, um, Patrick's monthly, um, report in front of them. It's time to make a decision on what we're going to do with the building. You've looked over it. I know says, do we need an air conditioner in the offices, two offices, the bathroom, the closet area? I don't think we need one in the closet area, but I do think we do need some type of air conditioning in the offices. The exterior part, the bay part, we don't need heating and air because that's going to be open anyway. So if we could just add in for the office space area.
It was originally discussed to, um, put it in the open area because you had talked about the council moving their meetings over there.
Right.
Um, again, like I put in the, in the request for action to you, I don't see a need for that when we can come here and we're already set up here and we know how to set everything up. If the maintenance building is going to be used the way I feel like it will with everything coming up, cleaning out that area just for you all to meet there when you can meet here until we get a town hall would be more trouble than it's going to be worth for everybody. Yeah.
I do. I agree with that. We just strike the air conditioning unit out of the bay area, out of the shop area and just um, air condition the office areas.
This is for the larger of the the larger of the buildings we were talking about.
Right.
Five thousand square feet.
So we don't have to upsize later on.
Correct.
Still the, still the five thousand square feet. The only difference, um, and I think I, I put in there that I did, um, have somebody looking over was to increase the concrete floor from four inches to six inches.
Yep.
Just in case there were larger trucks. And at some point I would think we're probably going to trash trucks or dump truck. And then specifying down on the second page of the project scope, just talking about the office and storage interior areas, what they include. And then I will change it to include the information about the heat and air. And if you'll notice on the first page, I've got it as going out. Well, I think the timeline is actually on the third page, going out the end of next week after Christmas. And then being due back by February first. So it would be at your February twenty-first meeting for you to award the bid.
My question is with us looking at the, of the land that we're looking at for the town hall, which would probably include enough space for a building. which would probably include enough space for a uh building, do we still look at putting this building here, or do we look to get enough land at this new, new spot to not only have a town hall, but we have a maintenance area, a police area, and maybe even a fire department area? As I understand, the fire department is looking to go over to that side of the road. Question.
Isn't timing, timing, wow, on here, yeah, timing is a, is a big part of this, in my opinion, and that's, if we, if we look to hold this off till we start and get and complete a town hall, we're still looking at three years down the line. We need this building. We needed it six, seven months ago. That didn't work. I'd like to see us proceed with it.
Anybody got any other comments? Because, I mean, I'm just answering that question.
I, what, you know, we'd, we, if we go with this at that location over here next to town hall now, we'd, we'd have it up within, within a year, easily.
Hopefully.
Yeah, whereas, whereas waiting for town hall to go up and make it a co-joint affair, again, that's three years, three, two to three years at least. It's a very perfec, I'm not, I'm not, I'm certainly not a building type guy, so I'm not, uh, I'm gonna leave all that up to you, but I think it's a very professional and well-done um request for a proposal.
I wasn't against doing the, you know, and I'm just asking the question, if I'm getting, trying to get input from all the town council members, not just one.
Any other comments?
Mr. Brown looking mighty hard.
I'm a public works.
We're going, we're going to tell Leanna to continue with the process of getting bids.
I make a motion, we approve the, the draft to be put out for public bid.
Sorry, I say, I, we missed that weird.
Make a motion, we approve the draft to be put out for public bid.
I'll second that.
Yes, sir. Right.
I will, he made the second. Any further discussion?
Just to clarify, you did say you did, you wanted heating and air in the office and storage spaces and not?
And not the bay area, the shop area.
Any kind of um?
Just normal, the heating.
Like a, like a, some kind of ined heating system in that?
Clarify. I mean, what you?
Yes, okay, to approve the bid with the ined heating system in the bays and the air conditioning system for the office area. In the maintenance building, yes, sir.
No.
Uh. Anything else?
That's all I have.
And that's all for Miss. Hudson.
The report's in the um, in your packets, if you have any questions. I'm very pleased with the audit, the outcome of the audit as well.
Uh, Ms. Sherry, the um, the revenue's coming in at sixty-three percent, and you're satisfied with that. Is that standard for this time, time of year?
It is, because of the add-on.
That's fine, thanks.
Just wanna convene you on the work you did for the audit. I mean, uh, he, the audit was so good, I mean.
Yeah, I was very, very pleased.
Because of, yeah, the people has presented the stuff and done the stuff the way it should be done.
Right. Thank you so much, I appreciate it.
Any other questions, Ms. Hudson? Thank you, ma'am. Administrator report, Ms. Leah.
I do not have a report for this part of the agenda.
Do what?
No report.
No report.
I make a motion that we go, I make a motion that we go into closed session concerning NCGS one four three dash three eighteen, decimal eleven A five. I will. Also want to add that we would like to invite our incoming mayor to the closed session.
Yeah, I'll resecond that.
And we, we will um go across the hall, we're gonna be able to unlock that door, and council can go across the hall, so everybody in the building doesn't have to leave this room, so if you, after you vote on that, we can go across the hall. Just, everybody else can stay here, but the council is gonna go across the hall.
Did you vote?
All in favor of saying, I, all opposed?
Call this regular council meeting back to order. At this time, the gentleman says I'm supposed to make my closing comments. And that means I got to get out of here. But I've sat here at this table for 21 years, and it's time for me to go. I have got to be an old man up here. If I make it through the 29th of January, I'll be 82 years old. So I'm getting old. And it's time to go. We've got a new mayor coming into, into office. And I don't know where she got to. Hiding behind the podium there. I'm going to turn it back over to Mr. Worley to do the swearing in, take over, and so forth at this time. If somebody can't push me out of the way. No, I can get out. I can get out of this picture. Ah? Yeah, I know. That's close to I ain't moved. Okay.
Do solemnly and sincerely swear that I will support and maintain the Constitution of the United States,
that I will be faithful and bear
that I will be faithful and bear true allegiance
to the state of North Carolina,
to the state of North Carolina,
and to the constitutional powers, and the authorities which are
or may be established for the government thereof,
and that I will endeavor to support
and that I will endeavor to support
maintain and defend
maintain and defend
the Constitution of the United States
the Constitution of the United States
to the best of my knowledge and ability
so help me God so help me God
I flee to bird
I flee to bird
do solemnly swear
do solemnly swear
that I will execute the duties
that I will execute the duties
of the office of mayor
of the office of mayor
for the town of Wilson's Mills
for the town of Wilson's Mills
according to the best of my skill and ability
according to the best of my skill and ability
according to law
according to law so help me God
It's Leanna. She probably come up here now.
Do solemnly and sincerely swear
that I will support and maintain the Constitution of the United States
the Constitution of the United States
that I will be faithful and bear true allegiance
that I will be faithful and bear true allegiance
to the state of North Carolina
to the state of North Carolina
and to the constitutional powers
and to the constitutional powers
and authorities which are
and authorities which are
or may be established
or may be established
for the government thereof
for the government thereof
and that I will endeavor to support
and I will endeavor to support
maintain and defend
maintain and defend
the Constitution of the United States
the Constitution of the United States
to the best of my knowledge and ability
to the best of my knowledge and ability
so help me God
so help me God
I, Tim Brown
I, Tim Brown
do solemnly swear
do solemnly swear
that I will well and truly
that I will well and truly
execute the duties of the office
execute the duties of the office
of town council member
of town council member
for the town of Wilson's Mills
for the town of Wilson's Mills
according to the best of my skill and ability
according to the best of my skill and ability
according to law
according to law
so help me God
so help me God Do solemnly and sincerely swear do solemnly and sincerely swear
that I will support and maintain
that I will support and maintain
the Constitution of the United States
the Constitution of the United States
that I will be faithful
that I will be faithful
and bear true allegiance
and bear true allegiance
to the state of North Carolina
to the state of North Carolina
and to the constitutional powers
to the constitutional powers
and authorities which are
and authorities which are
or may be established
or may be established
for the government thereof
for the government thereof
and that I will endeavor to support
and that I will endeavor to support
maintain and defend
maintain and defend
the Constitution of the United States
the Constitution of the United States
to the best of my knowledge and ability
to the best of my knowledge and ability
so help me God
so help me God
I, Randy Jernigan
I, Randy Jernigan
do solemnly swear
do solemnly swear
that I will well and truly execute
that I will well and truly execute
the duties of the office
the duties of the office
of town council member
of town council member
for the town of Wilson's Mills
for the town of Wilson's Mills
according to the best of my skill and ability
according to the best of my skill and ability
according to law
according to law
so help me God
so help me God
I, David McCallum
do solemnly and sincerely swear
do solemnly and sincerely swear
that I will support and maintain
that I will support and maintain the Constitution of the United States faithful and bear true allegiance
to the state of North Carolina
to the state of North Carolina
and to the constitutional powers
and to the constitutional powers
and authorities which are
and authorities which are
or may be established
established
the government thereof and that I will endeavor to support maintain and defend
maintain
the Constitution of the United States
the Constitution of the United States
to the best of my knowledge and ability
to the best of my knowledge and I, David McCallum
do solemn
do solemnly swear
that I will well and truly execute the duties of the office
the duties of the office of town council
for the town of Wilson's Mills
for the town of Wilson's Mills
according to the best of my skill
according to the best of my skill and ability
according to law
according to law
About like he was leaving, we're going to give you a little class. And it doesn't do justice for all the things that you have done for the town, for all the years you have worked, hours you have put in, extra stuff you've done, going over and beyond the duties of councilman and the duties of mayor. We as a town, thank you.
You're quite welcome. For the most part, I've enjoyed it.
I'm as ready right now as I'm going to be. Okay. I don't know if y'all can hear me. Maybe I'm getting here close enough. Okay. I call us back to order. Let me put my glasses on. It is time for us to appoint a mayor pro temp. The council needs to nominate somebody or talk about who you want to have that position. I'm going to give you my two cents worth. One we've got is doing a good job. You keep him up, Mayor Pro Temp.
I nominate J.C. Triplet as mayor pro temp.
I say.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you. The next order of, you got, oh, we got to give him his oath. I forgot. You got to take your oath. I forgot, Leanna. Y'all have to remind me because I'm new at this. She's coming.
I, J.C. Triplet. Do solemnly and sincerely swear that I will support and maintain the Constitution of the United States that I will be faithful and bear true allegiance to the state of North Carolina to the constitutional powers and authorities which are or may be established for the government thereof
and that I will endeavor to support
and that I will endeavor to support maintain and defend the Constitution of the United States to the best of my knowledge and ability so help me God I, J.C. Triplet do solemnly swear that I will well and truly execute
the duties of the office
the duties of the office
of mayor pro temp
of mayor pro temp for the town of Wilson's Mills
according to the best of my skill
according to the best of my skill and ability
according to law
according to law so help me God. Thank you.
Now we need to talk about assigning liaisons. And I would like to do something differently. I would like us not to have liaisons. It is not something that a lot of towns do anymore. It would free up the staff to be able to address any of council about any problem they might have. The staff does the reporting anyway. It would mean that if Wendy had a problem with planning and she thought that Tim could answer her, she could go to Tim and not have to go through Carolyn. It would just free everybody up. It would free us up to be able to go to any of the staff and maybe we have an idea here that we want them to do a project, we wouldn't have to go through a liaison. There's only one thing that I want council to remember. If you do have a project and you do want a staff member to do it, the first person you got to talk to is your town administrator. It's not going to say that, okay, I'm not a liaison. We don't have liaisons. And I can just do whatever with my staff. Everything has to run through the town administrator. But I want y'all's opinion. I want your suggestions. Because one thing I want this council to remember, everybody sitting at this table has an opinion. You have a voice. And you're an elected official, except our attorney. And you are to be heard by the members of the town. Your opinion counts. Your voice counts. We need to know it. We need to hear it. We cannot make decisions if we don't know what you're thinking. If you agree with everything we're talking about, let us know. If you disagree with everything we're talking about, let us know. But we need to hear from you. But we need to hear from you. So council, what do you think about liaisons?
I guess I'll go first. I've only been here for, on, on the, on the council for four years and, um, I personally like it. I think there's a degree of accountability. If someone has a question, I know who they can go to. If the chief has a question, for example, I've been the police liaison for four years. Uh, principally because I have a fair amount of experience and I can relate to him and I can, I can help him with things that need to be brought to council. I can relate to both the council and the police department. Somebody comes to me with a sewer question, I'm out in left field somewhere. I think there's people here that know about sewer. They know about planning. They know about building and maintenance and grounds and parks. I, I know about the police side. I like to see accountability myself.
It would not stop chief from still coming to you.
No, I understand. I'm just saying, I, I just, I like the, you know, we're, we're, we don't have, uh, we're, we're all at large. So we don't represent any group or any area in particular. We all, we represent all of Wilson's Mills. I just think there's gotta be some degree of accountability. Yeah, that's all, that's the only way I can phrase it right, phrase it right now, cuz it's kinda.
They're sitting at the table.
No, I understand. They're, they're sitting at the table, but I, I just like being able to come up and, and give reports with the police department and, and here and know when, if I have a question on maintenance, I, I'll, I'll go to Randy first and Randy can answer that cuz he'll talk to Patrick. It takes it away from Leanna having to do and, and get her fingers in a lot of this stuff. She's got enough to do. If someone has a question about, what are we doing about police cruisers? They come to me and I'll go talk to the chief. Uh, that's just the way I feel. I, I like a little bit of accountability. It's not a lot. We're not responsible for our areas.
Uh, I agree with, uh, Flee. I think it's time that most town manager municipalities don't have liaisons. I mean, I know Clayton, Clayton didn't have liaisons. Uh, uh, you know, and I agree with David in some sense that he knows a lot about, uh, police work. That's fine. That's where the chief should go if he has a question, but before the chief goes to him, the chief needs to go to the town administrator, cuz that's the person that's supposed to make that, that decision and, and, and be the supervisor of them. If somebody needs to talk to somebody about planning, they need to go to Wendy. Before they go to the town council person because she knows more about planning than any of us knows. Same way with some of the other things. So I'm, I'm, I'm for not having liaisons, but that's up to everybody else.
I've been on the board for, this'll be my fourth term. We've always had liaisons, but to me, a liaison restricts you to one area. I think all the board members need to be well-rounded in all areas. I've learned the maintenance stuff. I've learned some of the sewer stuff, the police stuff. We need to know more about everything. Leanna's your first point of contact anyway. And the way we're growing, we're gonna have to go to a manager-based board anyway. So it's gonna have to start somewhere and we might as well go ahead and start it now. Um, it's not taking any away from any of us. Because we're still gonna make the decisions, but we have to make sure, cuz we, we've got the right people in the right places to make these decisions. Don't bind them by waiting a month to come back to us. And the more we grow, the more manager-based we're gonna have to be.
Okay, well, it doesn't matter with me, but, um, I have not been, I've been here two years. I've not been on the planning board, but maybe five, six, not long, but, um, Wendy does it anyway. You know, the only thing I do is just, um, well, I listen to whatever and, you know, if anything dealing with, uh, the lots and all of that stuff, Wendy does that. I don't know anything about planning. I'm just gonna let you know that. I don't know anything about that, but if somebody comes to me and asks me a question that I don't know, um, I will feel it's, it's okay for them to go somewhere else, to somebody else that knows about planning, cuz I don't know about planning, you know? Um, so it does not matter with me, but I would prefer just get rid of the liaisons and just call each person, anybody that know, is familiar with whatever that you're asking about, you know? Um, and then if we can't help them, anybody else couldn't help them, just go to, um, Leanna. Or Flee, or to our mayor. It does not matter.
Well, I'm the new kid on the block here. I've been here for six months. And I'll tell you, the one thing when, when, when this board appointed me in Philip's position, the one, one thing that scared me to death was that word events. If you want an event to happen, I'm not the person to get an event done. It, I mean, that, that was the one thing and I was, and, and I was so thankful that, that Philip kept that and, and, and didn't pass it along to me. So from, from the new kid on the block that hasn't been a liaison, I don't care to be a liaison. I think, and, 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 and I mean that in all sincerity, but, but I think that we have a good staff in the town hall that that has, has been doing it. So, I mean, from my six months' experience, that's, that's just, that's about all I can say.
Leanna, you have any comments?
Um, well, to touch on what Mr. Jernigan said, we, you, you all are gonna be moving toward a manager council form of government very soon. It's not gonna be long. You're just growing too fast. There's too much going on to not, and you talked about that in your, the past couple of budget retreats that you've had. But as it stands, even without liaisons, I think our staff is, is competent enough to know that if they feel like they can't come to me as the administrator or whoever is, is gonna be a manager at some point, that they would know who on the council would be the most experienced in whatever it is that they have a question about. And it may not necessarily be specifically about their department. It could be something going on, um, in an HR manner. They don't feel comfortable coming to me.
Could be something they wanted to ask you.
Right, so, um,
About you.
To, to speak on Mr. McGowan's comments, I don't know that, you know, the chief understands that your experience and, and even Mr. Jernigan's experience with nine one one, he knows that if he has specific questions, who he's still gonna come to if it's not something that I can assist him with, so. You know, it, it doesn't cut anybody off from anything. It actually opens everybody up to a lot more.
That, that's what I think it does. It opens us all up to be able to communicate with the whole staff and not think that we have to just go to one staff member. Do we need to vote on this, Leanna? Is it something?
I'm gonna defer to council, but our, our, you know, it's a policy and procedure thing. It's not a charter thing for us. It's just something we've always done, so.
Yeah, I mean, I think you cut me a little flat-footed on that. I don't know where the origination of the liaison is and, and, you know, if it's in fact a policy issue, then, then, then that's all that needs to be said on it. You can have a, you can take a vote on it if you want, just to, you know, to have it on the minute, spread out on the minutes, but, um, you don't need to worry about the process as if it was a charter amendment, which would be not something we could do tonight.
Okay, do I have a motion that we do not have liaisons?
Motion that we do not have department liaisons during this two-year period.
Okay, do I hear a second? Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Triplet and a second by Mr. Jernigan. All in favor? All opposed?
I'll stand on principle and go no.
Thank you, Dave. Okay, the next thing we have is, um, approval of our holiday schedule for twenty twenty-two, and it's in your packet.
I'll make a motion. We approve twenty twenty-two holiday schedule.
Okay, we have a motion by Randy Jernigan and a second by Carolyn Dobbin. All in favor? All opposed? The next on the agenda is the approval of the meeting schedules, and this is the meeting schedule for town council and for the planning board.
I make a motion. We approve the twenty twenty-two dates and times for council and planning board meetings.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, Councilman McGowan made the motion. Councilman Jernigan seconded. All in favor? All opposed? Carrie? Okay. The next item is a discussion of the newsletter.
Yeah, that's, um, I gotta find it first. Hold on. I think one of the, the, the base articles that we've all spoken about or base things we've spoken about in the past two or three meetings is the rate at which Wilson's Mills, is this up high enough? Okay, the rate at which Wilson's Mills is growing, and I've often thought that we've got so many people out here now that, that absolutely do not know so many of the basics, the essentials of Wilson's Mills. I, I talked to some of the new folks coming in and they go, well, I live in Smithfield. I don't live in Wilson's Mills. I live in Clayton, and you gotta go through this long explanation. That's just an example of so many things that people don't know about. Um, and they don't know that town, that, uh, the town administration is, we're looking to move our town hall. They don't know what, what we're looking to do down here. They, if they don't get their information from the, the sunshine list or the, the bulletin board or a sign that's placed on the Wilson's Mills, uh, town hall property, they really don't know what's going on. So I, I was, I'm of the opinion and email just does not work. You're not gonna get anybody's email address. They won't give it to you, so that's out of the question. So are text messages. So I felt that it would be nice to have, and I'm certainly not finished with this yet, but a, a small newsletter that we can send out to current resident. Doesn't have to be an address and I, I certainly have to go in and I've been looking and trying to find something that's gonna be inexpensive for us to have sent out in a bulk mail, but all it has to be, and if you read this little thing that I put out, it's just, it's just one page. Uh, it can be a page and a half. It can be two pages with room for resident, whatever. That's all. Of what's happening in Wilson's Mills, what we're doing. Uh, counselor, you didn't know that you've been hired full-time, but that's for those of you that have read this, you'll see that he's now. That, that's just an example of, of some of the things. They don't know that we have a counselor. You know, he's on retainer, of course, but at some point in time when we hire one or hire an engineer, these are things that people need to know. They need to know where their tax dollars are going. They don't see anything. They don't know anything. If they don't read it, and they, half of them don't read, they don't even know about Joko News, which is where you're gonna find all the information you need for what's happening in the county, not just Wilson's Mills. They go, what are all those sirens for last week? Well, if you read it, you'll find that Officer Joyner was on a chase and look at he did, and look what we're doing. We're, we're taking care of our police department tonight. So highlights of the town council meeting, uh, highlights of the planning board meeting, uh, events committee meetings, what have you, things that are coming up in the park. Hey, we're gonna get a new Little League or a rugby league started. They have no clue, and how do, how do we get that information out? I say if we, if we have the money for it, and it's not going to cost a lot of money, I, I can't put a number on that, but I would like just a consensus. It doesn't require a vote. A consensus by this, this board, this council that we're interested in doing something like this and to just be able to continue on and look at it and see what it's gonna cost, and if it's within a budget that we can handle, let's go ahead and do it. Let's find somebody who's, who's got a journalism degree or always likes to write and can just do this stuff and get it out.
Did you know that we used to have a newsletter?
Well, you see, that's what I don't know.
We had a newsletter.
Little League at one time, but that one, by the way.
We had a newsletter when Patty Caddell was mayor. And we sent it out for over a year. And we sent it to every person that was registered on the tax registered for Johnston County because we got the tax. If they owned property in Wilson Mills Township, they got a newsletter.
Good.
And what we found out was that the people were saying, oh, that thing, I throw that in the trash. And it had good information.
Let's look.
But they, they would not read it. Now, they will go on Facebook.
Right.
And, and, and they will go on the town's page, cuz I asked some people, when you put this in here, I asked some people, if you wanted to know what Wilson Mills was doing, where would you go? And they told me Facebook or the town page, but they would not pick up a piece of paper. Your newspapers are going downhill fast because people won't read them. But we found out that the letters that we were mailing out and we were mailing, I, I know because I helped folded them and helped put the stamps on, the letters and stuff on them. They were throwing them in the trash can because they'd look at the address, return address was Wilson Mills, town of Wilson Mills, and the trash can it went.
How many folks in the audience that are out here tonight get their news from Wilson's Mills by going on Facebook? Do you? You get all your news from Wilson's Mills on Facebook? I rule out, I'm sorry, Donald, but I rule out JD's. No, I, no, I'm saying, I'm saying, I'm saying news, not not rumor, okay? There's a lot of things.
I just say.
There's a lot of things that come out of JD's, and I understand that. There's, yes, see, that's what, that's what I'm saying. That's, yeah. Oh, I know it is. I know it is.
But we have had a newsletter and it wa, it got to the point that it was so expensive and no people were not responding to it, but I think if we could get a newsletter like you've got and put it on Facebook or have it on the website so that people could do it that way.
Whatever it takes.
That would probably be good, and Leanna, what's the, the web? You gave it on my phone today. What, I don't, I can't remember what it was.
The app that we just started this year that's replacing the Blackboard Connect is called See Click Fix. And it actually has a homepage where we can add links on that homepage. I'm just gonna try to pull it up. I can show it to you.
It is, is awesome. She put it on my phone today and it's, the, the material that you can get on it is.
Yeah, I mean, and we talked about it in the beginning when we got it, and then we talked about it the next month. Um, and I'm, I'm gonna put a little plug in here because we've actually replaced Blackboard Connect with this app and we have twenty, maybe twenty or twenty-five people that have signed up. But this actually gives you the opportunity to report a problem that you see in town. Anything from a nuisance in planning.
No, I know what it is.
So, but on the homepage, we have the option to add links. We've already got our Facebook linked, our YouTube channel linked. There's a link that people can click on to pay their sewer bill. We could add other links if we wanted to add a newsletter link. It would go straight to one page of our website and they could just pull up the newsletter, but this, I mean, this app is really useful and we, we don't have a lot of people in town who have signed up in it. It's called See Click Fix. And if you have a question about how to spell it or how to get it, it should be on any iPhone or Android. It's, that is also on our Facebook page and our website. Sign up for it. Because you can report stuff and then you actually get information back about what the status is of what you've reported. If you see a pothole, is it being worked on? Has it been completed? If you see trash somewhere, has it been picked up? Who was it assigned to? Who's, who's working on it? Who do I contact if I have a question about it? It, all of that is on there whenever you download this app. And you can, you can also get to it on, on their website too, correct? Yeah, so if you're not good with apps on your phone, you can go to the website and do the same thing. But it's got a lot of information.
And David, this, this is what I'm saying. I, I think the newsletter is an excellent idea. I just don't think mailing it is an excellent idea. Cuz I don't think the people are gonna. is an excellent idea, 'cause I don't think the people are gonna respond to it. I think you're gonna hit them better if you get it on social media, that's just my opinion.
Boy, I'm just going down the toilet tonight, aren't I?
I'm gonna have to agree with Fleta in that, this, this world is becoming an internet world. A lot of, I mean, we had the Clayton News Star, it's no longer in existence.
Yeah, we used to have it.
We got the Smithville Herald.
Yeah, we used to have it.
I mean, everything, even, even the News and Observer, people are going online to read the News and Observer, that, you know, the News and Observer, when they send out the stuff now, that's very little stuff, and you need to go online. So, to me, I don't have a problem with getting the information together, and, and putting it online, but I just don't think we need to spend money to cop, to make copies, fold them and send them out, because they're gonna do exactly what Fleta said. They're gonna throw it in the trash. And, uh, but if they're interested in finding out something about what's happening in Wilson Mills,
Go to JDs.
They'll go online, no, they'll go online, might go to JDs too, but they'll go online, and they'll see what's going on, because it's online, you can find it. You know, for example, me, I, I'm, I, I, I'm interested, I've always been interested in Clayton High School athletes, 'cause I taught, taught and coached there for thirty years. I don't look at the paper anymore, I go online to find out what's going on. I go to find out how the football team did, I want to go on there and find out how the basketball team's doing, I go online, I don't go to the newspaper, because online, you get it quicker because you get it the next day.
I, I, I agree with you, let's split this, let's split this down the middle, 'cause I don't get newspapers either. I don't, I don't, but I do want people to understand what's happening in our little town here, and it's not gonna be a little town for long, we're gonna have a lot, thousands more that are gonna go, who's Wilson's Mills, and why do I have a Clayton address, for God's sake? We need to be able to explain this, we really do, so here's, let's, let's split it down the middle. Alright, so we're big on Facebook, let's do this, let's have somebody do this, and put a link on Facebook, they're not, I'm not gonna go onto the town's Facebook page and sit there and just read all that stuff, but if there's a link there that's gonna be to the town paper, okay, they can click on that, and there it is.
Okay, now I have.
I don't want a great big long Facebook thing, 'cause I'm not gonna read it.
We want one page.
Unless it's aviation or
Okay, now, who, who in town hall is gonna do this?
No, nobody in town hall, I'm saying we find somebody who, who, who likes, who takes, wants to take an interest in this and can do it.
This is still a problem, you're talking about town news, it's gonna have to go through Leanna.
If you read this, you'll see that Leanna is proofing it.
I know, has Leanna got time to do that?
Sure she does. I'm not looking at her, I ain't gonna look at her.
Le- Leanna, you can hit him, you have my permission.
Look at her, well, no, if Leanna can't do it, Emily can do it, or, or one of the, hey, you know what?
Emily can't do it.
Council members here who have nothing better to do.
Oh, you volunteer, huh?
How you like, no, I'm the only couns- no, I'm the only council member that has a job, I have to do the, I have to do the T, I have to do the TJ cog meetings every month. So, I do it, alright? So, there, we can find somebody somewhere, I'm looking for, the whole thing in principle, let's do this, let's put it on Facebook as a link, let's find somebody who can write it. Okay?
I, I agree that we need to look into that.
We'll get it proved, not for typos, but for accuracy, that's all.
Well, now you need typos, 'cause one of the one, let me just tell you a little story, one of the newsletters that went out from the town of Wilson Mills went out without anybody proofing it, and when the mayor looked at it, I think she found like twenty or thirty misspelled words and grammar errors, it was, and that's when she said, no more. See, we don't want our town to be that.
We'll have somebody that could spell.
Okay.
And then somebody had to gather that information too, right?
Yeah.
You gotta gather.
You guys are shooting me down here, I'm just trying to help out, for God's sake.
Well, I think, I think it's a great idea.
I just want the folks in Wilson's Mills to understand what's happening, that they just move into town and they go
Can we leave it like this?
We don't do town meetings.
Can we leave it like this, that we let Leanna, we let, we let Leanna work and see what she can do about doing this, and bring it back to us next month?
Sure.
The next item on the agenda is the memorandum of understanding with the University of Mount Olive. Leanna, would you like to explain this?
Sure, so, the University of Mount Olive has a program, it's in your packet, um, called TAP, which is the Trojan Alliance Partnership, and they actually have partnered with, um, different municipalities in Ann Johnson County, and it's basically just a way for them to, um, try to beef up their registration. So, they just offer a ten to thirty percent discount based on the number of credit hours that you're enrolled in, if you are a participating local government employee, and your local government participates in this program with them, you get the, you get the discount, it doesn't cost us anything, it just basically, the, the agreement is, is just us saying that we understand that if one of our employees enrolls at the University of Mount Olive, that they're gonna get this discount, even after they're no longer, if they no longer are an employee of the town, as long as they're enrolled, they still continue to get the discount. But I'm, I, I mean, it doesn't cost us anything, it's just a benefit for our employees, so.
There's no downside either.
No downside.
Is it, we, we do need a vote on this?
You do, you need to vote.
I make a motion, we approve the memorandum of understanding between town of Wilson's Mills and the University of Mount Olive.
I'll say.
Councilman McGowan made the motion, Councilman Jernigan seconded it, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay. They say here it's now time for me to give my opening comments, I already have. I'm just here to serve, to work with you, to make our town better. This is not a one-man show, it's all of us working together. We've got a lot of people in a Wilson Mill, a lot of people coming, and we've got to be prepared for them. We've got to make sure that what we do, everything we do is for our citizens, and that we do it correctly. And, um, I look forward to a good year, and I wish everybody a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year.
I would just like to say, as, as I said earlier, being the, the new person on the block, I, I think we've had some, since my short tenure, that we, I, I've gotten to, to know the staff more, and, and I think we have a top-notch staff. I think we've appointed, made some appointments that, that are, that are outstanding for our community, not just now, but, but i- in the future, looking forward. Looking at the growth that, that, that this town is going to, to be seeing in the next five to seven, ten years. I think it's important that we plan for our children and our grandchildren, and, and what we would like for them to, to inherit from, from the decisions that this council and, and future councils, and even past councils have, have decisions have been made. Um, I, I'm just honored to, to be able to serve the people of Wilson's Mills, I, I, I agree with you, Mayor, I, I think we need to hear from the people. I, I agree totally with, with David, we, we, we need, not a lot, not a lot now, not a lot, don't, don't, don't get your hopes up. But, um, but I think the people of, of Wilson's Mills need to know what's going on. And, and we need to, to make every effort that we can to, to, to voice those, those things, and because we do want their involvement, we want them to know what's going on in their town, and, uh, and, 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 and help hold us accountable as, as councilman, as mayor. And, uh, so I, I'm, I'm just, I'm excited to be able to, to serve this term, and I as well would like to wish everybody in, in, in town a Merry Christmas. Thank you.
First off, um, I wanna thank Philip. Up here, he was like my dad, I learned a lot, a lot of useful information from Philip. We didn't always agree, but we were able to come to terms, and the board was able to make decisions that were best for the community. Philip was up here twenty-one years, and I've been up here twelve with him, and not being able to see him up here, kinda hits you in the heart. Fleta, I've, I've worked with Fleta, and this board is gonna keep moving, we, we can't stop, we can't go backwards, we have to keep moving forward. That's what the citizens put us up here for. And it's, it's people like Philip that have grown this community to what it's gonna be. They don't know Philip forty, fifty years down the road for decisions we made ten years ago. And that's the way it needs to be, we need to keep making these decisions, moving in the right direction, providing for our citizens. Yes, they need to know what we do. I'm not gonna put it all on us, because they need to make effort too. It's just like this board. Three of us ran, that was it. We've got to have more community involvement, 'cause if we don't have any community involvement, it's gonna be this neighborhood, this neighborhood, this neighborhood. We need to be one, we don't need to be separated. Who knows where we're gonna be in the next ten to fifteen years with growth? You will never see Wilson's Mills like it was last year, without dirt being on Seventy Highway, without farms being through the military. Everything's going to houses, and we just need to progress and move forward, do the best we can, make the right decisions for the citizens. Ms. Byrd, you were our first planning and zoning officer. You've seen where it's come from and where it's going, you know where it's going. I'm glad to have you, your knowledge and skills. Nobody else better than to work in that line. You and Wendy will be wonderful working together. Um, David, you're David, I love you. I talk junk to you, but you, everybody does their own part, you bring the Yankee to Wilson's Mills.
But I work for the Orioles, not the Yankee.
Oh, I see what you're saying. Tim, I've worked with you a long time, I worked with you at prison. Maintenance, that's your specialty, we, we could get a lot of useful knowledge out of that, so this goes back to where everybody needs to work together, and everybody needs to be approachable. All I got, Merry Christmas, Happy New Year. Be careful, um, if you didn't know, Seventy Highway is now the wreck capital of Johnston County, so wa- watch your intersections.
I guess it's my turn, I'm not very good at ad-libbing and speaking, but I'll give it my best shot. First off, I wasn't aware that Randy and Tim met in prison.
You learn things every day.
Yeah, you learn something every day, I wanna piggyback on what Randy said, and I'll keep my, my stuff as brief as I possibly can, Philip, I wanna thank you for being the, uh, the, the shining light here, the guiding example, if you will. I've never run for anything in my life, I've run from things, but never run for anything. And, uh, when, when I ran for a council the first time, four years ago, Philip taught me how to do it, and do it the right way. And, uh, I did it this past, uh, this past election period, wore myself out, so I know what Philip went through that first time. So, uh, thank you, Philip, for everything that you've done for this town, and I've sat through every board meeting, not just the four years that I've been here on the council, but I've sat through every council meeting since, uh, I moved here in August of twenty fifteen. And I think starting in October of twenty fifteen, I haven't missed a board meeting, or a, a council meeting, I should say, or a budget meeting. Never have I missed anything, but Philip has always been there, and I've always been impressed with the way Philip handled everything, and kinda cut to the chase on everything, so thank you, Philip, for everything that you've done, we certainly do appreciate it. I'm happy to, uh, to have run again, uh, because I felt that I had more work to do here in Wilson's Mills. Um, I've done a couple of things that I've been proud of, and I've, I can't say I've ever been more proud than working with a council like this, with all you guys, Randy, uh, Ms. Dobbin's, all of you folks, just been wonderful, and, and I come away from every meeting with something positive. And, and I move on from there, so thank you all for what you do, thank you to the citizens of Wilson's Mills for having faith in me and voting me, uh, to sit up here for another four years. Ms. Byrd, congratulations, and I look forward to working with you for another full four years.
The, any of the other council have anything to say? You have an opportunity?
I just wanna say that, um, I have enjoy, I've worked, I've been here two years, uh, town council, and I enjoy working with each of you. I really have enjoyed it, I've learned a lot, you know, and especially from you, Wendy, I've, I've learned a lot. But, um, just continue to pray for me. And Merry Christmas.
I'm sorry.
And Merry Christmas.
I was fortunate to come in six years ago. I'm looking forward that we've got the exact same council. I said, I'm fortunate to have come in six years ago, I got re-elected, and, uh, I'm looking forward to working with this same council for the next two years, I think we're gonna everybody has good ideas, we don't all agree all the time, but that's what it's supposed to be about. We might disagree, but we disagree the right way, we handle it the way it should be handled. And that's what I'm looking forward to, is continuing to work for the town of Wilson Mills, and as Fleta said, we need to get more of the younger people involved in this town, and however we need to do it, we need to figure out how to do it, but, uh, let, let's, uh, let's give the town the two more years that I've been here, let's give them everything we've got.
It's now time for the second open forum, if anyone has anything they want to say, please come forward, state your name, your address, and limit your comments to three minutes.
Everyone right about one thing, we've got to get our community involved. How we do that, I'm not one hundred percent sure. David's right in doing something or having an idea about a newsletter, but I think the internet is the way to do it, whether you start by publishing the minutes of every meeting, or whatever you choose to do, Leanna, but that's the way to connect. We started out with five hundred people, now we've got three thousand people, we've got, uh, permits for thirty-one hundred houses. In two years, we're gonna have six thousand people, in five years, we're gonna have ten thousand people, and they need to be a voice, not a hundred and thirty or forty people making the decisions for this town and this budget. And item number two, don't build this utility building without having heating and air conditioning and the whole thing. You don't have to run it, but it needs to be there, and that's the cheapest time to do it, when you construct that building. Uh, I've got two that I built, and I wish I'd have done that same thing, but at the time I felt like I couldn't afford it. So, now is the time, and we need that building diligently, as you all know, you don't need to wait, thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Donald Byrd, seventy-five Power Ten Road. Uh, sitting out here in August tonight, listening to every one of you, it's one thing that we need to do, and I don't take nothing away from the chief, we need to take about five or six hundred dollars of his money, get all of your little pale, Mike, so we can hear you. This year, him has to cut it up, cut down, cut it up, cut down, there's no sense in that, every time you turn your head, just get a little mic, put on your pale. We even gotta be in the church, we don't even want people to talk. And, uh, then everybody can hear you. That's all I got to say.
Mayor Byrd, I just wanted to make a comment too, because I've, I've heard this comment two or three times in the past few months. The, every set of minutes for the planning board and the town council are put on our website as soon as they are approved. And I believe the agenda for the upcoming meeting is on the website as well, the week before the meeting. So, anybody who's So anybody who's listening or in the audience, if you have a question about what happened at a meeting, as soon as they're approved, they're put on the website. We do not put the draft ones up, but we, we do put the approved ones up.
Right. And that's what you need to do.
Just a quick question. And if they're, if they're up, if we do something like this newsletter and we. Post it on Facebook with a link to the newsletter at the end of the month, it'll have. We can refer to the minutes being up and, and posted on the town's website.
After they're signed.
For approved.
Right. So I'm saying, if, if we do something like I'm talking about and we do it towards the end of the month, like the last week of the month or so, the minutes will all be up, you think, by then?
The minutes for last month.
Yeah, for the month before. Yeah, yes, sir.
Alright.
Sean Fritz, 46 Wood Glen Drive. First of all, congratulations to the mayor. I told the people at my office, uh, that I was running for mayor and they said, well, they laughed. Uh, and then, uh, and then after I, I had lost, I said, uh, they said, how'd you do? I said, well, I lost. Said, how many? 12, 12 votes. Said, can you demand a recount? I said, absolutely not. There weren't that many votes to count. So, um, to, to piggyback on David's idea of a newsletter. Uh, we have the thing with Mount Olive that you were just talking about a few minutes ago. Why not hire somebody from there who just graduated? Give them real world experience to write a newsletter. They're cheap. And. They would know all the journalistic rules. Do interviews, whatever. Um, that's just an idea. Run with it. The other item is why not put some at JD's or. Put a QR code, since everything is online, put a QR code somewhere at JD's with their permission, of course. Right, David? And, and, uh, that way it automatically updates every month. You scan it, it's always there. You scan it in June, it brings up the June newsletter. You scan it in December, it brings up the December newsletter. It's the same, you don't have to print anything all the time. Or you print a 20 to 50 and put them at JD's. And because that is, if I'm not mistaken, I think I heard word on the street is that the word on the street is at JD's. And yes, we have, I have been looking into some better audio equipment, but until we have a permanent home. I think it's as good as it could get at the moment without piecemealing things because that never works.
I know, but.
Well, then you need a pocket. I don't have a crazy pocket for anything today. But there, you know, there, there. Those are my comments.
Thank you, Sean.
Good evening. Good evening. Can you hear me? Alright, my name is Chase Bradley. 749 Paratton Road. Most of y'all know me. Most of y'all know me on my wife, uh, about two council members. Congratulations to those who got elected. Grandma, congratulations. If you don't know, she's my grandmother. It's a good thing that we're trying to get out the community. I've been here 27 years. And if I want to know anything about town council, I ask two people and they're both sitting in this room. So, I mean, otherwise I have, I mean, until recently, Facebook, you do need a way to. Reach out, uh, whether it's Facebook or the county, uh, the town website, however y'all do it, it does need to be done. Um, and I applaud y'all for trying to do that. So thank you. Merry Christmas.
So we can count on you running next election? Cause we need, we need young blood.
Amanda Jones, 753 Power 10 Road. I just want to say, piggyback enough of what, um, Sean said. Um, the QR code is the way to go. And I say that because I work at Carolina Premium Outlet. And whenever we do something new, everything's with a QR code. So if you're wanting to reach my age and younger. And I'm 48, you need to go with QR code. Because everybody scans the QR codes. And for you to have your newsletter or your information that's going on in the town on that QR code, that's the best way to go. Just my two cents.
I actually had no idea what a QR code was until my son went to. Look for a car and the salesman says, take your phone and, and scan that with your camera. And it gives you the price and gives you everything on it. It's about about a month ago. I had no idea what it was.
Our business cards have had a QR code on them for about five years now. I think we just stopped it about a year ago. All of our business cards have that on it. Takes them to the website or to the page. Yeah.
Is there anyone else? Okay, the open forum is closed at 9:04.
I'll second.
All in favor? Merry Christmas everybody.